It is now 5:01. Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. And I call to order the Victorville, the regular meeting agenda for today. Victorville City Council. I'm all confused here. What am I doing? I call to order the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez absent.
I don't have any cards. I don't know if this gentleman would like to speak. So at this time, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have only one item this evening. It is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4, one potential case. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will recess to closed session, and then a regular session will convene at Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P.M. February the 4th, 2020. And I call to order the Victorville City Council meeting, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez absent.
At this time, can we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had only one item this evening. It was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4 pertaining to one potential case. And at this point, there is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Now, we will have the invocation by Pastor John Martin, our first Assembly of God church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. So please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with hearts full of gratitude for what you are doing in our lives, in the life of Victorville and throughout the high desert. We ask, Lord, at the very beginning of this proceedings, that your Holy Spirit would guide and direct us. And we thank you, Lord, that you're the God who gives us wisdom, and direction, and guidance, and strength within our lives. And I pray, Lord, that for each and every item on the agenda tonight, and for every action that takes place, that you would guide this council. Thank you, Lord, for our mayor. Thank you for every city council member. Thank you for everyone who's serving in our city. We pray your blessing upon them. And we pray, Lord, that we will continue to move forward as a city as you would direct us. So we place this evening in your hands, and we bless your name. In Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I will ask our city clerk to please present the agenda to council, please.
The city council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item is requested to complete a speaker card and hand it to any sheriff's deputy prior to the public comment or before an agenda item is discussed. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not the members of the audience. Individuals should not approach the dais unless authorized to do so by the presiding officer. In accordance with state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. There are no revisions to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, are there any items on the agenda that may cause a conflict of interest to any council member? The recent. So we move on to public hearings. The first item, Case Plan 19-00049, a development agreement to allow for a one-year extension of time for tentative track map 14863 in 561 lot, single-family residential subdivision that was previously approved and environmentally assessed on property located north of Puesta del Sol Drive, east of Village Drive, south of Desert Poppy Lane, and west of Green Hill Drive. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding the development agreement and introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2406, which approves the development agreement between the City of Victorville and Pinehurst LLC.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will ask our council members if they have any questions of staff, and it's a three-minute time limit. I will start with Ms. Jones.
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
Yes. So I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at an extension here, which is another year. And it's my understanding that we have an average, a typical, and actual deadline or time for all the departments to be able to expedite the process for an extension not to be handed. I'd like to know, based on the executive team that oversees the management and supervisors and everyone in staff in this regard, what is the average timing that we anticipate? Something like the permitting, everything that develops with the permitting to take effect, average?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it's really kind of hard to give an exact average because every project that goes through our process is different. And a lot of the dependency has to do with the quality of resubmittals after an original submittal is made. But one of the things that we do market to our developing audience is presuming everything goes smoothly, which means the designers, the engineers representing the project are submitting consistent with our guidelines. We're reviewing those. We're getting into the commission. There's no issues at the planning commission. We're actually marketing to our development community that we can turn around entitlements in 90 days. And so I think that's the timeframe that we certainly can work with and meet if, again, everything is perfect in terms of all the submittals.
And then the second question is now, instead of looking at average, since there is no average time that you can be able to supply and timing, what would be a typical?
Maybe based on experience, I'll have Scott come up and maybe just share kind of typical that he sees. And I just kind of illustrated the perfect world scenario, but maybe knowing the process the way you do, share, you know, what you typically encounter in terms of submittals and resubmittals.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It is very hard to peg a timeframe for especially a tentative track map because when developers get approval of a tentative map, they could sit on it for years on end before they have to record it. It's allowed for in government code for them to apply for time extensions. So it's very hard to give a general timeframe because it weighs heavily on the developer and their processing. But like City Manager stated, that a 90-day period, I would say within a 30-day period is when we can get comments back to them. That's a maximum, but sometimes it takes a few checks to get those items in order.
Okay. And the second question, my third question is, it's related to the same one, but you can't ask typical, I mean, you can't ask average. You gave me typical, 30 days after, then you can provide commentary. So what is actual?
The actual probably have to be on a case-by-case. I mean, we have a permitting system that tracks that, and we can give specifics if you want to give us an actual map.
What did you say? I didn't hear what you said in terms of you have something that documents or records it?
Yes, we have a permitting system that tracks when the submittal occurs and when comments are given back to the applicant. So it's all tracked.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and it is hard for us to have a specific timeframe on any of the projects that come through, I can tell you as much that certainly over the last couple of years, we've spent quite a bit of time throughout the entire organization looking at ways to streamline it. And I do believe, based upon the system that we have in place, which is the permitting system, it's a back office system that allows us to manage all projects as cases. But beyond that, we've modified to make it easier for developers to actually submit plans to us. We actually have an ability to accept plans electronically through the permitting system. It's got some, it's, I'd like to say it's a really smart system. That's about as sophisticated as I can get when it comes to technology. But in managing each of the cases, we've got notifications that go to each of the various divisions that are responsible for participating in case review, developing conditions. And one of the things that we've done recently is we've actually reconfigured all of those that touch a development project, whether it's engineering, whether it's fire, whether it's building, whether it's planning. We've got them all effectively co-located in an area so as to be able to encourage more face-to-face interaction behind the scenes to make sure that the issues of the past are not the issues of the future, which is to mean things aren't being left behind, we're not missing conditions, we're not sitting on cases too long. I do believe, based upon the technology that we've implemented, along with a lot of the reconfiguring and realigning of our human resources, we're probably situated to respond quicker than we ever have in terms of development projects. Of course, that being said, we'll still hear the complaints. And a lot of that, we find, because the system tracks very well, each and every touch of a particular case, it's not uncommon for us to find that delays are effectively caused due to either a reduced quality of resubmittal from the developer, or even just a delay altogether in getting the plans back to us. But notwithstanding that, I can tell you, and I believe staff will even attest, that we're probably as streamlined as we've ever been.
And then another question is, are we working on an applied strategic plan for this particular department, which would be economic development and takes all the permitting and then processes that are contextualized with today's item?
Economic development is a division in the city that is more responsible for the marketing and business attraction. They'll also help facilitate in answering questions and making sure that projects are going through as streamlined as possible. They're really an interface available between us and the developer or the new business coming to town. But they don't have a direct, they're not directly involved in the actual plan review process.
So they're not going to be having a strategic plan in order for us to be able to track and streamline even more efficiently as the 21st century progresses?
At this time, we don't believe that's necessary. We've studied as much as we can internally to find all the streamlining that needs to be done.
Does a department have a master plan?
Which department?
This department that Scott Webb's a part of?
Scott's department is the Development Department. The department itself doesn't have a master plan, but it's responsible for administering a number of master plans, the biggest of which would be your general plan. We've got a number of specific plans as well. And then they also facilitate as cases on a case-by-case basis when they're submitted by developer, actual development-specific master plans.
Thank you. Now for the questions.
Mr. Cox, did you have something?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I have just one question. So Mr. Mezler, this particular request for expansion, extension has originated with the developer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, read the title of the ordinance number 2406.
An ordinance of the City of Victorville allowing a development agreement for a term of one year, Case Plan 19-00049, between the City of Victorville and Pinehurst, a limited liability company in connection with tentative track map 14863, a 561-lot, single-family residential subdivision that was previously approved and environmentally assessed.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. I had a lot of questions for our executive team for the following reasons. They weren't just randomized. They were actually very strategic. I've gotten a lot of developer feedback, local developer and developers from outside of the area. And one of the biggest complaints that I've heard, it's taking three years for something of the process, and this was just two items ago in terms of two sessions. Yes, even though Mrs. Jones did ask that if this was because of the developer wanting to extend, a lot of that happens when we are not following something, and I don't have the exact language, but if you continue to talk to the developers, we have a lot of bureaucracy. We have, whether our departments are either not, maybe there's a lack of manpower. Okay? I'm not blaming the staff or the employees. But when something is going to take us two and a half to three years, and it should take us typically, what I've heard, six months, depending on the process of the employees taking into consideration what is going on, I'm not considering the fact that if the other party is delayed as an organization, you know, that's going to be documented. You know, they could wait two, three years or whatever, and they're going to pay a penalty. But when I start hearing that our staff are the ones that are losing the ball and they're not on it, and I'm keeping track of the developer calling the monofone saying, have we addressed this issue? No, it's taking longer, and we have to readdress the issue? I'm telling you because I'm talking to the developers. I'm getting their feedback. So I've talked to quite a few, and I'm not going to give any names out because I don't want them to be retaliated. But I am saying this because the executive team needs to know that if this is the best streamline that we have, this is an issue. We need to start working. I don't know if we need to hire individuals, if we need some retraining, what we need, but we definitely need to take care of this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as to the comments regarding staff, I have to at least acknowledge how proud I am of the staff that we have, the enormous amount of talent they all have, the hard work and dedication that they put into this organization is unwavering. As to the comments about projects potentially taking two to three years, if that exists, it is very likely that we have some unhappy developers out there, more so likely due to probably wanting the city to do things that it's not supposed to do. It's not uncommon where developers are asking us to bend the rules or do things that are not consistent with our development code. And for reasons like that, I've certainly seen cases where perhaps we have not made everybody satisfied with the process that we have. But for those that are actually willing to respect our codes, our processes, we certainly don't see the issues that Councilmember Gomez is sharing. Two to three years sounds a little bit out of the ordinary and probably is not really being clear as to what constitutes two to three years. Because as an example, we just looked at a case involving tentative track maps that extends many, many years. So probably be helpful to know a little bit more precisely what we're talking about. But that being said, it's not uncommon for any issues, in fact, I'm dealing with one right now, where there's a question as to whether or not we're being as fair as possible on a particular project. Those issues come to my attention, and I get them resolved. If there's resolve on our part as staff, we resolve it. More times than not, it's a developer asking for us to do something that is not consistent with our code. And in some of those cases, we have to draw the hard line and just say, sorry, we can't accommodate your request.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, we're starting to get a little further abreast of the actual discussion. The agenda item is basically the approval of a development agreement. We should limit the comments and the discussion to that.
And they are. So the comments that are made are very pertinent.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call for the orders of the day. The discussion is straight considerably from the motion pending before the council.
Do you see what's happening right here right now? When I'm trying to talk and let this conversation for our administration to understand that there's issues, and I want to advocate for them, and you have this kind of language, there was no need for him to respond. I can set up a meeting with the developer. You and I sit with him, and he can tell you specific issues. All I'm doing is erring for the public to realize that I can't communicate with staff in this regard. And I'm not talking about employees. I treasure the employees. They're working very difficult, very, very hard. But Mr. Mezler, I'm sorry, I can sit with you with the developer. Okay? There's no need to do this, Ms. Jones, either. Okay?
Point of order, Madam Mayor, at this point. May I state my point?
The comment did allow me to do this.
Madam Mayor, may I state my point? So, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the motion pending before the council is with regard to the recommendation on the agenda. So all conversation, discussion should be directly related to that. And while I understand that there may be concerns external to that, they can certainly be requested as a part of a future agenda item, but this would not be the appropriate time to make those comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You are correct in that respect.
I do have a motion in a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, and a second by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to item two. United States Department of Housing and Urban Development required public hearing for community planning and development grants. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen, agency, and prospective applicant comments regarding the city's needs and strategies for the 2020-2021 annual action plan.
Thank you. Councilmembers, if you have any questions of staff, this is a three-minute time limit. I will start with Mr. Cox. Do you have anything?
I have no questions.
Jones?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
Yes, are we going to, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open up the public hearing first, or hear from the public?
Typically, no, typically, we always ask, you ask council members for their comments and questions before we open the public hearing.
Okay. So I know a lot of the individuals that are here in the public aren't very, very familiarized with the home, the HUD, and the CDBG. I have the background here myself that I've read, but for the purposes of having our public understand what is actually taking place, more specifically with the monies, federal monies that we are granted with the consortium of Apple Valley, how is it that we are able to administer that funding? And what are the protocols in terms of administration? I know Ms. Collins works very diligent with other members. How is that processing and the pointage system working?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, to answer the question directly, I think it's working quite well. It's something that we've done for many, many years. And there's two administrative efforts that go into administering both the CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant Fund, along with the home funds. And the home funds separately put and separately addressed, we do participate in a consortium, I wanted to say a JPA, a consortium with the town of Apple Valley, where we use basically each other's populations to achieve one of the thresholds to be an entitlement city for home funds. And we administer those jointly. CDBG, we administer independently as Victorville, as we meet the thresholds, population thresholds on our own, to be an entitlement city. And this item in front of you, along with the subsequent items that will lead us probably through the month of May, that involve not only the application process, the education process to those that are interested in applying, to what's starting to be tonight, the annual review process to develop your annual action plan, and then eventually developing the selection of the committee to review all the applications based upon the priorities outlined in the action plan. Then selections are then recommended to the council, and the council then makes decisions based upon those recommendations. If everything goes smoothly, we bake those recommendations into the upcoming budget for the, in this case, the 2021 fiscal year. We administer it with a small staff out of the Development Department. And as I stated originally, I think the process that we have in place and the administration that we have in place makes this as easy as possible for us at the executive level and you here at the council level.
Can you further detail the process of the pointage system in terms of categories?
I'm sorry, can you restate that question, please?
Yes. Can you provide the internal process with the point system that's used per category?
As I think you're speaking to the ranking process, maybe Sophie, unless you have a staff member that can better address that.
Bill, do you have the ranking sheet there? Okay. Go ahead.
Fair to speak. There are about seven categories that we look at each application. As far as the scoring, collaboration, the need, the priority needs that it fits, capacity of the subrecipient, and there's a few more that I don't have offhand.
Past performance.
Past performance is one of them as well.
And the categories that Ms. Collins is referring to all stem from the consolidated, the five-year consolidated plan that the council approves. And so when she speaks to priority in ranking applications, it's whether or not the applicant meets one of the top priorities that were identified in the con plan. For example, in our most recent con plan, I recall homelessness being, was it the number one category?
Yes. There are five currently on our consolidated plan. Homeless and the at-risk homeless, human services, which covers most of our public service agencies, economic development, and housing, of course.
So the ranking sheets that are developed, and Mayor Garcia has served on the committee for many years, so she's very familiar with them, will actually take each application, and the committee will go through each application and rank each one in all of those areas. Collaboration is whether or not it's a joint application from more than one nonprofit that is actually collaborating and working together, and they actually score higher points, for example, how high they are on the con plan needs, whether or not they have demonstrated past performance, have they received money in the past and then properly spent it, and met all the reporting requirements, those types of things. That is how the applications are ranked. It's a very method- It's a very methodical and well-documented process.
One of the categories that we added the last few years was a result of our five-year plan that we developed in 2017, and it's participation. We met with a lot of the core groups out there as far as education, homelessness, veterans, and seniors. Yes, thank you. So it was very important that we would get the organization's feedback in order to develop our five-year plan. So one of the categories that we included was participation. So that would be if they came to our meetings, if they spoke at our public hearings, and also if they spoke at Apple Valley, because we are in a consortium together. So those things we take into consideration.
And my last question is, is there any discretion used when ranking or any of the processes from the beginning of the onset until the very end?
Discretion?
Yes. Do you or any other of your colleagues or the executive team use discretion as to when they're ranking the beginning or the last of the process? Is there any room for discretion to be used?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
No.
I have no questions, thank you.
At this time, I opened the public hearing, and I do have some cards. I will call them out in the order they were given to me. The first one is Linda Elliott, and after her will be Brendan Newell.
Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Linda Elliott, and I'm a volunteer with the Assistance League of Victor Valley. We are a nonprofit organization. We're all volunteers. We have no paid employees or members. And we've been serving the High Desert for 38 years, supporting mostly youth programs and education, trying to improve the lives of the economically disadvantaged families in our area. Our major program is Operation School Bell, which probably a lot of you may have heard of. We do get the CDBG from Apple Valley, but for some reason, whoever was working on grants neglected to apply for Victorville for the last few years. So we do know how to manage the money and we know how to get the most for our dollars from these grants. But our major program is to buy new school clothing for children each year. So since we started the program in 1987, we've closed almost 30,000 students in the Victor Valley. We serve all seven school districts, all the schools in them. We're expanding to cover all the high school students this year. In fact, we have some shopping events at Target with the three Victorville high schools coming up this month. So we've already closed 300 children in Victorville schools this year, so we hope to get to 600 kids. And we spend about $100 on each one. They come to Target, they select their clothes, and then we pay the bill. So all funding from any grants given from you would go directly to pay for that clothing. We know that studies have shown that appearance and your clothing makes you feel different about yourself. I know people talk about it as adults and applying for jobs, but it starts when kids are small. And we do a survey every year at the end of the program with the schoolteachers and the administrators. And 85% of the students who participate are shown and proven to have an improved performance in the classroom, interaction with their peers improves, they have higher confidence level, they interact better in the school programs. So we know it's working and it makes a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all that information. Brendan Newell, and after Brendan, Midge Nikosia.
Good morning, Madam, I mean, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Brendan Newell, here on behalf of Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board. Our office provides mediation services and fair housing services to the citizens here in San Bernardino County and the cities that they reside in. My office has just recently submitted their application for CDBG funding, and we look forward to your continued support and continue to serve the residents here in the city of Victorville. Just wanted to express a great thank you and some gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do they have the air on? No, it's very cold. Yeah.
I'm cool.
Thank you.
Ready?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I talk a lot, so give me more time. City Council Mayor, I am Midge Nikosia. I'm the Executive Director for the Victor Valley Community Services Council. We are the original nonprofit in the High Desert, started back in 1956, so we've been around for 63 years. We service senior citizens and disabled adults. We provide free services, and the services we provide are to give them back their independence and assist them in the time of need. We all have empathy for children because we have all been children at one time, but until you become a senior yourself or you've had to help a family member or a friend who is getting on in age, you don't realize the needs that exist. For instance, when you lose the ability to drive and you no longer can just jump up and get in the car and go get yourself groceries. We've asked the city this year for funds for our home repair program, and what we do is home repairs for health and safety issues. We want to keep our seniors healthy and safe in their own homes. So we do things like heating and air, plumbing, wheelchair ramps, grab bar installations. We do chores where we do weed clearing for fire safety and code enforcement to support code enforcement issues. We don't want seniors to be charged for weeding when we can do it for them. We get volunteers, very active in the community, to help us. We are one of the agencies that are the go-to place for the Department of Aging and Adult Services when they have a need for seniors. We get calls from all the local cities when they get calls into their front desk from a senior resident that needs assistance. We usually get it. If we can't help them with a program that we provide, because we also provide transportation and a lot of other assistance, we do refer out and work with some of the agencies that are here today. I want to give Liliana a big hand because she's been, made it very welcoming to apply for CDBG funds at the city of Victorville. It's not always been very welcoming in all of the cities in the High Desert, believe me, because I've applied for them all. But she works really well with the nonprofits, and we're really happy to work with her. Also, we have applied for funds for a construction grant for our own building, which we have in the city of Victorville. We do help the disabled, and we have people in wheelchairs, and we want to make sure that our ADA ramp is up to code and our broken parking lot is easy to access. We have a vehicle, a bus, that we use for free transportation, and so we want to be able to get our people in and out of our building for our senior activities safely. So that is another application that we have put in. Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We thank you for the past funding, and we hope to continue to get funding and use it well.
Thank you. Jamie Lamb, and after Jamie, Dana or Donna Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you guys so very, very much for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Jamie Lamb, and I'm the CEO of Social Science Services, Inc., doing business as Cedar House Life Change Center. And I am here tonight representing Oasis House, which is our program here in the High Desert. Cedar House started back in 1943 with 12 beds to serve men with alcohol struggles. Since that time, 47 years later, we have grown to a multi-facility treatment program where we have 136 beds. We serve pretty much the entire continuum of care from outpatient counseling to residential counseling. We also have a treatment center for moms with children, and we also have sober living. And then we saw a need, and an opportunity presented itself to provide transitional housing for transitional aged youth. So these would be, I will refer to them as kids, if you'll indulge me, kids between the ages of 18 and 25, really young adults, because we saw a need. In our treatment facility, we would serve that population, and we would watch them go through treatment, only to be concerned and worried about what would they do when treatment ended and therefore they had no place to live. So when the county opened up the opportunity for us to get a contract, we felt that that would be a great opportunity for continuum of care. And we had a wonderful piece of property up here in the High Desert that we could access. It's on five acres. It had two housing structures and five garage bays. And so we had a whole vision for housing transitional aged youth and providing a complete array of services on the property. So essentially, we don't just house these kids, we basically raise them. Because most of our kids come to us with some sort of developmental arrest, and so they're really, they need everything. I mean, when my son was 18, he was not ready to leave. So we work with these kids in any way that they need it. And we will take them for everything from driver's license to social security, to get social security cards. We have tremendous support up here in the High Desert. We've been here now for two years. We've worked well with Apple Valley, and they've been gracious to grant us CDBG funds. And so we're kind of just getting started. So this is our first year applying here at Victorville. We see about 25% of our population comes from Victorville, and so we know that the need exists here to house these youth. And so we would greatly appreciate your support in enabling us to continue to do that. We're asking for funding dollars to support the operations of the house, because we have been finding that need. So we definitely would appreciate your support, and thank you so much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Donna Hernandez, and after Donna, Tiffany Gillespie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I am Dana Hernandez, the CEO of Rockin' Our Disabilities Foundation. We are a social, emotional, and recreational program that we serve for individuals with intellectual disabilities. We have a sports and recreation program. We have Monday night class, Monday night special needs dance classes. We have special needs dance hip-hop on Fridays. We have something called Saturday Camp, which is similar to almost a boys and girls club learning type setting that we offer twice a month. We also have something called a Soaring Eagles Club, which is a leadership and skill building for special needs families. We service the entire family. Last year, we saw about almost 4,000 people in all the programs and services that we offer continuously throughout the year. We are new to applying in the Victorville, city of Victorville. We are set up in the Rick Novak Center out in Hesperia, so we are partners over there. We saw 111 Victorville, Victorvillians last year, and our program continues to grow. Does anybody have any questions? No? Thank you. And I will be leaving early, but I have to get home to my daughter. So, she's special needs.
Yes, I know that. Thank you. Tiffany Gillespie, and then after Tiffany, Antonio Perez.
My name is Tiffany Gillespie, and I'm the Grants Coordinator at A Better Way. We're a 25-bed shelter and outreach with classes for victims of domestic violence. We've been servicing the High Desert for over 30 years now. This year, with the help of the funds we received from the community funding, we're able to provide 100 clients shelter from DV situations. 1,071 clients have attended classes through our outreach, with 713 of them being new, and 1,657 individual counseling sessions provided by our DV counselors. These funds are also helping to amp up our mental health aspect. We've collaborated with our current MFT, and she's helping to develop a new program providing individual counseling sessions with her interns who are at the master's level to be able to provide those much-needed counseling sessions to our shelter, our shelter clients and our outreach clients. I just wanted to say that we appreciate and thank you for supporting our organization and for considering our application for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Perez, and after Antonio, Amanda Bell.
Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I've never sat in front of so many people. Like, yeah, I'm nervous. My name is Antonio Perez. I work for St. John of God Healthcare Services. First off, I do want to say thank you, everybody, for the many years that we have worked together in providing services for the community that we do care about and that we cherish up here. I am here, we have multiple service agencies that we deal with, substance use being one of the big ones. I also work with Samaritan's Helping Hand, which helps with utility assistance, not only for families but also our seniors and disabled as well. We are, we did submit a request for funds to continue that service of providing assistance with utility, gas, and water. We've extended those services as well to partial rental health, or rental assistance for those that are facing getting evicted to avoid homelessness. Some of our biggest issues now currently is homelessness and mental health issues. And we've been working very hard at trying to address some of those issues as well. So we did submit also a grant for our repairs to our residential treatment facility, which we service possibly about 600 people a year, including a parent with children. We're also attached to a daycare that is licensed through the state of California, and these buildings are old and they are in need of repairs. We are a nonprofit organization, so most of our profit goes right back into trying to support these things that we do provide, the services that we provide. The other one that we have is working recovery, which has been very beneficial to a lot of people that are coming out of program, that have never, or haven't not had a home in a while. We help them with getting clothes. Prior to leaving our treatment facility, we've been helping people get their food handlers cards for those that are willing to go into that area, boots, certifications and forklifts. So they're not leaving our facility with nothing. They're able to start putting in, you know, for themselves as well. One of the other things that we've also asked for is some assistance with trying to get some of the sidewalks repaired at our Sixth Street location. Currently, we do not have a ramp for wheelchair in front of our facility. We've been using the side of the house and side of the garage, so to speak. So we've also included that. So I see my timer's running down. I do want to say again, thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you for all the assistance that we've received from Ms. Collins. It's been very wonderful working with everybody that we've been working with. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Amanda Bell?
And after Amanda, Steven Spielberg.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Bell, and I'm here tonight on behalf of A Greater Hope and Foster Kids Like Me. A Greater Hope was founded 18 years ago at the request of the County of San Bernardino. There were a great need for foster family homes here in this city, yet none of the existing foster family agencies would travel out here to provide those homes. So A Greater Hope was founded. We are now the largest provider of foster family homes in the entire county of San Bernardino, and we have two offices here in the city of Victorville. In addition to foster homes, we offer comprehensive behavioral health services, which is the new word for mental health services, is therapy. Most agencies don't have those services in-house. We do, and they're vital. A Greater Hope has experienced an unprecedented 59% increase in the number of individuals who reach out to us and say they're interested in becoming a foster parent. This is because of Assembly Bill 403B. For each of these families that are interested in fostering, we provide detailed family and home evaluations, 40 hours of training, 11 different background checks for every adult in the home. We want to make sure these kids are safe. In 2019 alone, In 2019 alone, 134 families who completed our pre-screen and orientation were from the city of Victorville. And 125 foster children were placed in our homes in the city of Victorville, also in 2019. We've also applied for a construction grant to secure the infrastructure that we need to meet a profound behavioral health need, sensory integration. Aiden, age four, foster child, he lives in a city of Victorville home. He can explain to you sensory integration. He cannot come into a crowded room. He becomes agitated, overstimulated, and it didn't go well at the annual New Year's Eve party at his foster home for him. Aiden experiences the sensory integration issues like many foster children because of the behavioral health diagnosis that he has, post-traumatic stress disorder, which foster kids are diagnosed with at twice the rate of war veterans. He needs help with those sensory integration needs. Because for him, common things, sounds, the feeling of the tag on a shirt are so overwhelming and distressing. We currently have here in the city of Victorville, seven therapy rooms that are utilized. Three of them have the capacity to be outfitted with the infrastructure to meet the sensory needs of children. Children will utilize these rooms during their individual therapy sessions, during supervised visitation. We did 9,000 hours of therapy last year, 10,000 hours of supervised visitation, and we transform children's lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steven Spielberg, and then after Steven, Keisha.
Okay, you just don't look like the Steven Spielberg I've heard about. Just have to say, because I know everyone's thinking about it.
So, yeah, not the first time I've heard it, but so yes, I am Steven Spielberg. I'm with EH Housing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I was listening to everyone else speak, and it's so many different worthy causes, so I'm going to tell you about ours, but, you know, I wish we could fund them all. EH is a 50-year-old nonprofit affordable housing developer and property manager. We've been in business since 1968 and over that time, we've developed approximately 100 different affordable housing projects. We manage all of our own units as well as those of other owners and sorry, is that too loud or? And right now, we manage approximately 11,000 units across 17 counties in all of California and Hawaii. Recently, we had the opportunity to work with your city's successor agency to talk about a few pieces of land that I believe the city has to take action on within a certain amount of time, former redevelopment parcels. And so with that in mind, we put together a proposal for the city, which includes affordable housing, low-income seniors. And given what we heard earlier about the con plan and everything, we've, we've tailored that to low-income seniors, extremely low-income seniors, and about 10% of the units would be for homeless. And there's a space in the, the building for Keys Nonprofit. So like everyone else here, we've applied for CDBG and home funding, which would be a key piece of funding for the project we're proposing. The project we're proposing would actually be about $36 million. And what we're hoping to do is leverage the home and CDBG, CDBG funding to be able to go out to the state to apply for state funding and tax credits and then bring back the rest of it. So approximately 1.3 from the city and then around 35 million from the state and other sources. So it really would be a great opportunity for the city to take a little bit of money from here and leverage it into something a lot bigger. And so the goal would be to house low-income seniors and others in need. I think that basically covers it. I welcome any questions about the particular project or organization or anything. So thank you for your time.
Before you leave, I do have a question. I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit about the redevelopment and then the city, if you had any contact with them?
So the, I'm going to say 2011 or so, the governor got rid of redevelopment agencies. And so a lot of cities, Victorville included, had assets that were kind of difficult to describe, but the, the state tried to repossess all these assets. And so now there's an actual timeline that the city has to take some kind of action on these lands. And I don't, I'm not quite sure what the trigger is. And I believe that Lysenya and her team are looking into what needs to be done by the actual deadline. But I believe either a DDA has to be put in place or a building permit filed or something in order for the state Department of Finance not to try to take back the land from the city.
Thank you.
And don't quote me on this. This is my, you know, summarizing what I believe the, the state laws are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keisha, and then after Keisha, Cornelius Page.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name is Keisha Collier. I am the Program Director for Community Health Action Network. CJ Page is the Executive Director. And we have been in the high desert since 2007. Our office is located in the city of Victorville. And our goals, kind of, our goals and objectives and even our mission, if you will, kind of coincides with the mission of the Victorville Strategic Plan for the CDBG. Meaning that our goal to serve, you know, our community through nutrition, through our food vouchers that we offer, through education and empowerment. Also, we do car safety programs in teaching the significance of keeping the children in a car restraint. And once they complete the certification and training, we offer a car seat. Our proposal is to enhance our emergency assistance program, EAP for short. In collaboration with other partners in the community, we offer utility assistance. And through that, we found that there was a need, a dire need for rental assistance. As you guys probably already know, about 23.3% of the Victorville community is living at the poverty standard. And our goal is not just to put a Band-Aid on it by providing utility, rental assistance, and also motel vouchers for those experiencing homelessness, but to also empower them to be contributing citizens of society. And we believe the way we can do that is through offering the program, our emergency assistance program, as well as streamlining that with other programs for financial literacy, to help them manage their money better or save and do things like that. Educational assistance, we offer a GED program for those who may not have their high school diploma. Whatever we can do as a community-based organization to ensure we empower our community to be uplifted, our mission is healthy families, thus a healthy community. We thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity to apply.
Thank you. Cornelius Page, and after Cornelius, Vicky Mack.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. As she just stated, we're Community Health Action Network, CHAN for short. And one of the things that I'd like to emphasize on is the need that is in the city and the people that come for us that help. We have become the establishment since 2007 where families come and they depend upon us. They look for help, for us to be able to enable them, to be able to empower them, to get back up on their feet. And I'm clapping and I applaud because we have stood there to the test of time to be with them. So the utilities assistance is very, very, very needed that's here. To see a child that is an innocent child go without, we won't let it happen. We have been funded through different organizations and foundations, but this is what we have stepped into with our city, to partner up with our city to help our family. So we're asking for your support to embark upon this journey with us so this epidemic can be able to reduce a little bit. And she said it best, our financial literacy, and we do that and we take that serious. For every second Thursday of the month, we talk about the finances with the families. And we're also there to be able to help them. So we're looking for our city to come back and be with us and help our residents to be able to stay firm and to be able to empower themselves and be able to help them with the financial literacy and the rental assistance that we are asking for. So once again, on behalf of Community Health Action Network, we want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us. A lot of you have been in the community and, and served with the community. And you have seen the face that we have been established with throughout this whole entire high desert. So we asking you one more time to step up and be able to help the organization that we need, because we need your support. Today, I'm asking for your support. Today, I'm asking to empower us to be able to empower these families that is in need. And once again, I thank you. I am blessed to be a resident of Victorville and I am blessed to be standing tall with the city and the CEO of Community Health Action Network, CHAN for short. Thank you guys very much, and we continuously look forward to your fellowship. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicky Mack.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Mack. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Victorville. I'm also a former lived experience mental health consumer and a current mental health consumer family member. I am one of the first district behavioral health commissioners for the County of San Bernardino. And I'm also Executive Director for Sterling Solutions, a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit here in the city of Victorville, established in 2012. And since 2015, with grant funding from the California Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development, we've been providing mental health workforce education and training services. Some of the highlights that we've done, we provided mental health first aid training for 25 mental health professionals. We provided youth mental health first aid training for 35 young adults from the Goodwill Youth Opportunity Center. We have provided peer specialist certification and training and have actually gotten peer specialist jobs for five of our local mental health consumers and family members. And just in 2019, we conducted the first, we collaborated with St. Mary's and the Mountain Desert Career Pathway Services and conducted the first annual mental health career summit for 125 career contemplating high school students here in the Victor Valley. Our public service application is for a program called the Behavioral Health Outreach and Peer Engagement Project. And it's to provide peer specialist training and work experience to lived experience consumers. Many of the, of the mental health people, the people that you see in our community with mental health challenges, they may have housing, but what they don't have is purposeful activity in their lives. They don't have opportunities for positive community engagement. They don't have opportunities for meaningful social contribution or reliable, suitable employment opportunities. The purpose of the BE HOPE project is threefold. One, to provide a pathway to pay or volunteer community service for mental health consumers. Two, to provide peer support services to mental health service people that are either pre, mid, or post-mental health crisis. This will alleviate the overuse of expensive and late-stage interventions like overreliance on 911 and emergency room services. And also increase safety for our first responders, for community members, and for mental health consumers. And also to supplement and alleviate the shortage of mental health professionals that we have in our areas. So I thank you for listening to me and considering our grant application.
Thank you. Alejandra Diaz, and after Alejandra, Leslie Earl.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Councils. I don't have the best voice today, but I do my best. My name is Alejandra Diaz and I'm the Regional Coordinator for Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities on a national level has been around over 110 years, locally for 40 years. Catholic Charities have served both San Bernardino counties and Riverside counties. And Catholic Charities is governed by a 15-member board of directors. Currently, Catholic Charities have 67 paid employees as well as over 300 volunteers who support our various programs throughout our county region. Catholic Charities have had local presence in the high desert since 1999. We have an office, regional offices here in Victorville on Seventh Street. We serve all people in need through the island counties, regardless of religion, affiliation, and without discrimination. Our objectives include, one, to meet basic needs of families. Two, to provide families with the necessary support and linkage to other services. Three, to disseminate information which is helpful to families while providing stabilization opportunities. And four, to offer professional counseling service as needed as well. The Coordinated Housing Food and Eviction Prevention Service Program describes in the application that we provide to the city on the application for CDBG. And it's exclusively for the benefit of the city of Victorville residents. This funding request is to supplement and to provide continually service, food, rent, temporarily motel, shelter, electric, gas, water, et cetera. In an effort to improve the agency response to the ever-increasing demand for basic next services by helping individuals and families residing within the city of Victorville, our proposed request of funding a specific service includes standard intake and screening to determine eligibility, an assessment to determine client's needs, development a plan to meet those needs from experience Catholic Charities has learned that preventing homelessness and eviction can best be accomplished through the following basic next programs such as High Desert Senior Food Program, Food Assistant Program, Temporary Motel Shelter Program, Rental Assistance, and Utility Assistant Program. And the estimate that we funded from city of Victorville, CDBG Public Service Program will serve-
Time is up. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Leslie Earl.
Good evening. I want to thank the city of Victorville City Council for this opportunity to further explain our grant proposal. I'm with Victor Valley Family Resource Center, and for over a decade, we have been one of the largest housing providers in the San Bernardino County and more specifically, the high desert as it, as it pertains to emergency shelter, transitional housing, and emergency shelter for families. VVFRC has housed over 700 men and women in our shelters. And we have an 86% success rate in transitioning homeless and the working poor out of shelters and into permanent housing. What this has allowed us to do is become, what this has allowed us to do is actually know that what's needed is rental assistance for getting people out of shelters and into their permanent housing. And that's what our grant is for. What we propose is to have funds for eviction and homeless prevention with rental assistance. This includes financial assistance, which aligns with the consolidated plan with, with both Victorville and with the County of San Bernardino. These funds are for rental arrears, deposit funds, which are first and last month's rent, utility assistance. And our office receives approximately 30 calls a day for the needs of rental assistance and half of those for residents of Victorville. More important, our services don't stop there. We don't just give them a Band-Aid. We will also provide wraparound services, which are budgeting, credit repair, and credit building, money management, case management, and life skills. We want this not to occur for them again. So in order for us, for the order for them to do that, they may need and possibly do need the skills in order to learn how not to have the financial crisis again and again and again. and again. So what we want to do is we want to leverage other funds that VVFRC has so that 100% of the grant funds that we're asking from Victorville go directly to Victorville residents that have a Victorville zip code. That way you have 100% of the funds going to your residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those were all the cards that were submitted. So at this time, I close the public hearing and I need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, it doesn't look like there's a motion required on this particular item. It was just to conduct the public hearing.
Madam Clerk?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to go as recommended by staff.
We've already done that. The recommendation was to conduct the public hearing.
So I made the motion. Do we need a second? That's how we have normal procedure and that's how we do business related.
Well, I won't vote on it because we've already-
Excuse me. Andre? My request here is for a motion in a second.
Yeah, there's no need for one at this point. This is just to have the public hearing. I believe there's going to be several additional meetings where after the committee has made recommendations, it'll come back to the council and at that point, there'll be a requirement for some formal action. Right now it's just to receive testimony and to understand all the requests.
So that's in there on my agenda.
So you know, it was really interesting. Can we go ahead and have that clear? Because I don't appreciate the mayor not being able to follow and I'm thinking the same thing. So if Ms. Jones is on track and so is the city attorney, I think our entire team should be on track.
I know, but I was giving this request for a motion in a second, so evidently this is again in there. So this was just-
Again, yes, this is just to receive all of the comments and have the public hearing. I think there's going to be further action at subsequent meetings. The recommendation on the staff report is that we conduct a public hearing to receive citizen agency and prospective applicant comments regarding the city's needs and strategies for the 2020-2021 annual action plan. That's the recommendation.
This is just to receive and file? Why do we have a recommendation? Why do we have an ordinance? This is typical what we do. Is there something else happening? Receive and file?
There is nothing to file on this particular item. It's specific to just taking, opening the public hearing, taking the testimony.
So at this time, we just took testimony and it will be continued? Not continued?
So what's the problem with making a motion?
Yes, now you have a record of all the public testimony. That can be used by the committee when they go through the analysis of the various application grants. So no further action required at this. We can move on to the next item.
So the guidelines are incorrect. Okay, that's fine.
So then what's the problem with making the motion to receive as recommended by staff? Is that any procedure?
There's nothing to receive.
So then why make a recommendation?
The recommendation was there to advise how to conduct this actual agenda item, which was to open the public hearing, receive citizen agency and prospective applicant comments regarding the needs and strategies for the 2020-2021 annual action plan.
From now on, would you make it clear, no motion required? This is the first of its kind in three years that I've ever seen this.
So I move on to item three then. Item number three, amending in its entirety Article 5 of Chapter 6 in Title 16 of the Municipal Code relating to rental property inspection requirements. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding ordinance number 2407 and the municipal code amendment including therein, introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2407, which amends Article 5, Chapter 6, and Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gomez? Ms. Gomez, do you have any questions?
We're on item number three?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So I went through the ordinance and then the ordinance that's reflected all in red lines. So they didn't seem to have too much, but you want an update. So we took off from 16-6.05.070, all the terminology with crime-free rental property lease addendum, which is a huge part. So where did we embed this and sprinkle it in on the rest or did you just mayhem this entire piece of it?
The language was removed and not placed anywhere else. It was deleted from the code. It's proposed to be deleted from the code.
I'm not understanding. Why would you be able to explain? I know it says based on government codes, California federal codes, but I don't understand. I mean, I don't have the coding to kind of match it. I just see it's removed.
So you have a red line attached with existing municipal code and showing strike-throughs of what is proposed for the new language, which is Attachment A, that's attached to the ordinance. And all of the strike-throughs refer to a crime-free lease addendum that was added to the code in 2015 and has not been utilized by the city in any of its practices, so we are recommending removal.
Like it says crime-free rental property lease addendum. All rental properties required to obtain a rental business license shall include a crime-free lease addendum. So I see it hasn't been used, but so why erase it just because it hasn't been used? I mean-
There have been significant challenges in the state of California right now as to the legality of crime-free housing requirements from cities. In fact, we believe the city of Hesperia right now is subject to a challenge based on that and several other cities in California are based on that. There have been indications by certain stakeholders that we may be facing a challenge if we tried to enforce it. We have never implemented it, therefore we believe it's appropriate to avoid any potential challenges or concerns to eliminate all of the crime-free housing requirements.
Okay, now I understand and I've heard those arguments. Thank you for the clarification.
Does anyone have any other questions? At this time, I open the public hearing and I do have one card. Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good evening, City Council. It is true what the gentleman said about the Department of Justice suing the city of Hesperia for actually the strike-throughs is for discrimination against minorities, Hispanic and black communities, especially the police department hounding them to victim from the residences. So I guess the city is enacting on that. My question is, I'd like to know, they're going to need an inspection to get a business license to rent the property. What is the cost of those business licenses that are going to be incurred? The self-inspection, if they don't qualify? Because that's going to affect the renters because the rental owners are going to pass those bills back to the tenants, as a matter of fact. So that's one thing that I was looking for, those numbers for the fines and everything that can be enacted in the city. The city is going to enact on the property owners on behest of the tenants. And I wasn't able to find anywhere, searching through the city ordinances or nothing like that. And there was nothing also in the additional files there that was posted also. It just says the city manager will be allowed to put his code enforcement people to actually inspect the houses from inside before they get rented. And I guess they have to get a business permit, how much is that going to cost and the fines incurred if they rent a property without the business license. And like I said, I scoured through the website, the city papers and permits and there was no fines stated there. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only card that I had at this time. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance number 2407.
An ordinance of the city of Victorville or the city council of the city of Victorville amending in its entirety Article 5 of Chapter 6 in Title 16 of the Municipal Code relating to rental property inspection requirements.
Thank you. At this time, I do need a motion in a second.
So for this one, I'm going to challenge it. I'm going to say, why do we even need a motion? We just heard it's already accepted. It's in the game. What's the difference? Every year we've done this. Today it happens to change. Why?
So, Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
That's the response to my response to my question?
Here you have an ordinance for consideration, which is basically becomes part of the municipal code that always requires a formal action of the council.
Okay, so do we have that delineated in our policy so we could go back and look at the policy, what requires a motion and what doesn't? Because it's getting a little ridiculous.
That is clear in the policy manual.
So the other one, you could have cited policy, but you failed to do so? If you can give me that policy to review the last one, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Second.
Oh.
A motion?
I'm prepared to if you invite one.
She already had.
A motion?
I'm not understanding.
Okay, are you prepared to accept a motion at this time?
Well, you made a motion.
I didn't.
I make the motion to do the recommendation as follows. I need a second.
I'll second it with a caveat that it pertains to point two in particular. We've already handled point one in the recommendation.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, a second by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes. If the council will allow me, the rental housing ordinance that we have, we know that there are cases, we know cities are losing the cases. We haven't enforced it. We have problems. The state is involved in the rental housing program. We're doing away with that portion of the ordinance. Not having any effect in regard to what it costs somebody to get a business license if they want to go into the rentals. It's not modified in any way. And how many years have we been doing this now? 2015? Yeah, so for five years we've been doing this and I think it's $100 or $125 and so it's not a part of it, it's not changed, it's not in consideration, and this ordinance doesn't affect those fees in any way. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to item four, amending the sewer rate schedule in subdivision D of Victorville Municipal Code, Section 10.01.030, to reflect the automatic pass-through of increased sewage treatment charges established and adopted by the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority in finding an environmental exemption. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct the public hearing, fine ordinance number 2408 exempt from environmental review under sections 15061b3 and 15273 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, introduce ordinance number 2408 for adoption and first reading by title only.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members at this time?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jane.
Basically, we have a rate increase, which we need to pass through because we get a bill from the VVWR and that will reflect, the increase will reflect what is needed to actually, the treatment of the sewer. Does this also apply to the customers that are using the Victorville sewer plant? And secondly, did Victorville do a separate study for what the rate should be for the Victorville plant as opposed to the VVWR plant?
Good question. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think Doug Matthews is here that can just back me up if I say something incorrectly, but the rate plan that we currently have for the city's collection system that we did a couple of years ago now, looked at both the collection system and the treatment operations and treated collection and treatment as an entire system. So effectively, there's one rate for everything that both goes into the pipes and gets treated either our plant or at the regional plant. The only thing that this is doing differently is that it's taken into consideration just that pass-through rate from the VVWR plant and effectively gets mixed into the rest of the system costs for the Victorville collection and treatment system.
I would like, irrespective of what we do here, and I realize this is a public hearing on this rate, I'm going to request at the end of the meeting that the city attorney issue an opinion. These are two different plants. I believe it requires two different studies and I don't want to be challenged and lose on this because I think we have to conduct, I think it's in our interest to conduct a separate study. I also think it's in our interest to conduct a separate study on the amount that we're passing through for VVWR and how much of the rate we're keeping for Victorville. I think that is a requirement of the 218 study and I don't see it reflected here, just to be safe. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cox, is that, if that's the motion, I'm willing to second that so that an opinion can be written by the attorney?
I will apologize and ask for an opinion. I wouldn't think that the motion would be appropriate here, but if it is, thank you for the second, but I'm requesting that it either be looked at as a separate action at the end of the meeting or now. It doesn't make any difference to me.
Yeah, right now we're just on questions of staff.
Did you have any questions?
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gomez, did you have something?
Yes, so in my understanding, we always have a presentation by a consultant or someone that gives us the feedback. Then I'm used to having a Prop 218 where the people have the opportunity to come and say, no, we don't want an increase. Yes, we want an increase. I don't see that reflected here. And then third, I don't even, I couldn't vote for something like that just because the municipal code states that we can increase somebody's fees. How are you just going to do that without asking the people? I don't think they have the opportunity. They didn't have the opportunity. It's not like normal where I would see someone come in and do this. Or was it? Maybe I just missed it. Maybe I'm just oblivious of what's going on.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and speaking to the 218 and I think also speaking to Councilmember Cox's comments, the rate plan for the Victorville collection and treatment system was done back in July of 2018. And when we approved that, that was approved after a number of public hearings, notices to where we did have the consultant come in and prepare and present to you the five-year plan for the wastewater system. And with that, it identified all of the capital needs, it identified all of the operating reserve requirements, capital reserve requirements. It effectively established a rate plan for the cost of service over five years and identified rates that were recommended to this council to be addressed over the course of five years. One thing that we did do in that plan preparation and adoption, because it was known that VVWR was considering for its treatment works itself, a rate plan that likely would have a rate increase. Because it was not known at the time what that rate increase would be, and in fact, it hasn't been known until just late this last year, where effective, I believe December 1st of 2018, the new rate plan went into effect for VVWR, effectively giving us an opportunity to know exactly what that increased rate for their treatment operations would cost. One of the things that we did, anticipating that it could be a while before VVWR actually approved its rate plan, and it's actually prescribed in government code and it gives us the allowance to do it, and that's actually how we adopted our rate plan back in 2018, was we actually approved a rate plan with the caveat and the understanding that the regional plant can be treated as a pass-through, effectively allowing us, given proper notice to the rate payers, a direct pass-through of whatever charges the regional plant operations are going to charge. And so that's effectively the process that we're following right now. Speaking to Councilmember Cox's comment as to needing two separate rate plans. Now that is something that was looked at before and it was something that was deliberated before we actually even approved the 2018 rate plan. And one of the challenges that we found in creating two separate rate plans is the potential to where you have two different rates for, effectively, you might have neighbors across the street that could have, in theory, a different rate depending upon where their actual gravitational flow is headed. So when we did develop the rate plan, we did consider that, the difficulty in administering that, and we also did consider Prop 218 in how we form the rate plan to- that, and we also did consider, um, Prop 218 in, in how we form the rate plan to consider all of the treatment operations irrespective of ownership in treating, treatment operations and collec, uh, collection in the aggregate under one plan. And that's currently what's governing our sewer rates.
If, if I could add on that, the only caveat is on the industrial side of our plant, which is totally independent of VVWR A. So, the rate increases for VVWR A don't go to those customers.
Yeah, and I have a follow-up question. So, if you look at the fiscal impact, it says, and I'm starting mid-sentence, it says, "Increased costs for treatment incurred by the city as a result of VVWR A's recently approved." Aren't we, like, anticipated, aren't we, like, waiting for VVWR A or some kind of lawsuit? It's, it's just, isn't that what's happening?
No, that's not what's happening. I think, um, what we're, what we're trying to identify in this fiscal impacts section is that the, the revenues will be, I'm sorry, the expenditures will be offset by the revenues in, in the simplest terms. One of the things that we are doing that, that perhaps is worth highlighting is because this is occurring almost exactly halfway through our existing fiscal year, one of the things that we did was quantified what that eight percent increase of VVWR A's treatment rates meant to our rate payers. And, and what we did find is that it's a much smaller percentage that gets directly passed through when, when you consider all the treatment and collection operations. And one of the things that we did to avoid confusion is deferred the amount that would be a direct pass-through to VVWR A. We deferred that effectively until July 1st, and then we allow for the remaining three fiscal years under the current rate plan to be the years in which we make up this six months difference. And, and the importance in that is because if we didn't do it that way, we'd be asking for a direct rate increase right now, which, which we're not, we're actually recommending it, this going to affect July 1st. But if we weren't, we would be recommending one right now, and then in short order, say ninety days, we'd actually be out noticing another rate increase for the upcoming fiscal year. So effectively, the rate increase that we'd be realizing right now for the seven months that is December 1st through the end of our fiscal, we're actually aggregating that into forward years so that you're not effectively creating the appearance of the rate payers as you're hitting them with two rate increases over the course of the next six months.
And then page 212, top, VVWR A increases their sewage treatment rates from 3,503 to 3,784 per million gallons effective December 1st. Aren't we selling to the High Desert Power water at thirty-five instead of a hundred? Or is that irrelevant? I shouldn't talk about that. You can speak to that, right? Because I'm out of order now.
No, I, yeah, I don't think that has anything to do with the sewer rates.
Okay, and then, so if it's, it says here that the first of five, eight percent rate increases scheduled to occur over five consecutive fiscal years, so eight times five is forty, forty percent plus inflation. Is that because we're trying to cover lawsuits costs with VVWR A?
No, similar to what, um, Victorville has to go through, they do a 218 study as well, or something that would comply with 218 as well. And, and one of the responsibilities we all have as public agencies in establishing rates is to, to clearly identify what are the cost of services for that particular system. So, their rate plan, similar to ours, goes into looking at what does it cost to do the physical treatment? What is the cost to, to, to repair and make any repairs to, to the system that may be necessary to keep the plant functional? It also addresses cash needs to make sure it's got sufficient cash on the capital reserves and the operating reserves. Very similar to what we go through, they're, they're going through the same thing. And, and with all those costs, it identifies what the service revenue requirements are going to be, and then that turns into a rate which gets broken down on a user basis.
No further questions?
Madam Mayor, I do have follow-on questions. May I? Thank you. Mr. Metzler, so if I understand this correctly, for the balance of fiscal 2019-2020, there'll be no increase needed? For 2021, it'll be, uh, a dollar thirty-seven? The out year, the two out years are 291 and 471 respectively. That's what I have on page 213. Is that accurate?
That is accurate for the single-family residential class.
Correct. And, and this is, at least in my view, tell me if I am misunderstanding this, reasonable given it's natural for the cost of doing business to increase over time.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I have one card, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Hello again. I understand that everything goes up in life, gas, taxes, prices of food. From notice since I moved in here, well, started the house I moved into, um, about six years ago, we were paying eighty-nine dollars a month. Took away all my grass and the rocks and the whole thing, having done anything, I mean, been as, as, as tight with water as possible. Now I'm paying a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month in just five years without any, uh, any changes in my habits, no more people or anything. But this is kind of suspicious because a few months ago, we were here talking about a fine from a Hanta for 1.5 million dollars, plus the city having to pay 4.5 million dollars in, in reparations. Supposedly, they blamed, uh, for, uh, um, people, uh, people were, were throwing tires inside the sewers and, and, and distorting the water flow. And so La Hanta fined the city of Victorville 1.5 million dollars for allowing this to go on for several years. This is when the city was going through a lawsuit with SEC at the time. So I'm thinking, while all of a sudden, the, the price is going up again. Now, all the prices that I saw, the fifty-five dollars, the recommendations of forty-seven dollars, is that per month or per year, per family? And I noticed also the, I left my papers in another car I was in, but I noticed for businesses also, for example, Keurig, Dr. Pepper, they're going almost, they're raising them almost a hundred thousand dollars a month in their water bill compared to the other years. All of a sudden, you know, they've gone that much usage, so why is the water going up so much? And it just, like I said, I'm kind of skeptical because that lawsuit just came in. The city has to be paying, uh, all that money. I think 1.5 in fine, I think they, once they fix it, they don't have to pay the other fine. But all of a sudden, the price is just going up tremendously for, for no reason at all. And I read everything back and forth, and it's just, uh, it doesn't really make sense. I listened to all the people who are saying, I read it twice. I did all the research, it's just, uh, it's just a little too excessive, I think. And I think this, these rate, rate hikes are simply mismanaged, the city does, and the, us, the citizens are the ones that end up paying for it at the, at the last eve. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre, I have a card from Blanca that she wants to speak.
If she wants to speak as a member of the public, then she relinquishes her ability to speak on it, up on the dais and to vote on it.
So, Ms. Jones, you have absolutely no authority right now to say that I'm decontextualizing what I'm going to say. You didn't do it to Ramiro, you wanted to do it for me when I was sitting as a council member. You can't do it now, can you? No. And thank you for giving your glaze, your eyes gaze at me. I appreciate it. That's the kind of respect that I deserve whether I'm over there or over here. So what I was trying to say was that this is very suspicious. VVWR A, we do have a lawsuit. We had something two months ago, two, two seedings ago that we're talking about VVWR A settlements. You think the people are stupid? If June, June 2018, why are we implementing that in June 2018? Why are we for VVWR A? You want me not to talk from the dais, but you fail to understand that as my first constitutional right, I can come right here and you can't shut me up. And that's what I wanted to say. So if I have to do that, I continue to do that. And regardless of what the attorney says, he has no authority to say that I can't take my seat as a council member and that I cannot vote. Because if he does that, she would have to be able to state that. Councilmember relinquished her seat, which I did not. I have the First Amendment right to come and speak three minutes, as you and I would, because I advocate for myself and my community too. And if I do reveal certain secrets as an insider, I'm going to do it from right here. Okay? Even if it looks bad on whoever looks bad.
Blanca, please, stay.
But that is very, very, very awful. Okay? We have VVWR A settlements that are coming in that we're going to be looking at, and it's not fair for us to say that this has nothing to do with that because they, they are correlated. VVWR A, the city of Victorville, and we've been looking at closed session items. I'm sorry, but there's something suspicious going on.
I have a question of the attorney. Do we have a lawsuit with VVWR A?
We do not have a lawsuit with VVWR A, correct.
Has there been any settlement with VVWR A in filing a lawsuit?
No.
Okay.
I don't have any other speaker cards, therefore I'm closing the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending the sewer rate schedule in subdivision D of Victorville Municipal Code, Section 10.01.030, to reflect the automatic pass-through of increased sewage by the Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority.
Thank you. At this time, I do need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation particularly as it pertains to points two and three on the agenda.
I second it. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? Yes. I believe that, why didn't we do the 2018 June? I'm not sure why, but I believe it's fair if we would have had that rate to immediately adopt and implement, but we didn't implement it.
Yeah, Garcia, just point of order, per the policy manual that you have all adopted, once a council member leaves the dais, per the policy manual, they cannot longer speak on the item.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, then you require a second from a member that was sitting here, so to make, keep the record straight, I will second the motion.
Correct.
Seven motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items five through nine may be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for, for discussion. I need a motion to approve consent calendar then.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council and boards, any, um, lieutenant boards of directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda for items five through nine.
Second.
I have a question on one of those items, or a comment.
Item?
It's, um, for the fiscal part of it.
I'm sorry, which item?
The, the, I don't, right now I don't know the item, but I know we paid D. Bornowski sixty-nine thousand dollars, and I just wanted to know where that money was going to.
I need to know what item, number though.
Yeah. I got caught off guard, so I couldn't give you a number, so that was my comment. So you could just take it as a comment.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item number ten, that the City Council appoint two, two council members to serve with, with staff on the Community Planning and Development Grants Self Committee. Any questions of staff at this time from a council member? Questions? No? At this time, I open the nominations. We need two council members to serve.
Yes, Madam.
I move that the mayor and Councilmember Jones be the two individuals. Counsel?
I'll second that, if that's a motion.
I'll move that the mayor and mayor pro temp sit on that seat.
I'll take the first nomination. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones, for Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
I do not have any speaker, speaker cards, and we already took the motion and the second, so that's, we move on to item eleven. Award of Contract for Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District approve the award of the contract for a risk and resilience assessment and an emergency response plan to Water Systems Consulting for an amount not to exceed 137,750 dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members of staff at this time? Anyone have a question?
I just have a comment. I thought we had emergency response plan. Manager or somebody.
We do, though I believe state law has required something greater for water systems. I'll allow Mr. Matthews to address this item.
Yes, that, that's correct. Um, it has to be a separate plan from the city, and there's, they constantly have changes that we have to implement. And there's a flyer showing, it's one of the attachments kind of showing what needs to be in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any questions?
I do, no, I do not, thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion and a second.
I move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number twelve, Request to Purchase Air Fill Station with Approved Grant Funds. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the purchase of one mobile air fill station in the amount of 119,438 dollars and sixty-five cents from L. N. Curtis. This purchase will allow for the design and purchase of a mobile air fill station that can be taken to an emergency incident location to fill a self-contained breathing apparatus, air bottle, air bottles as needed. The use of the SCBA is required for proper respiratory protection and mandated by federal and state authorities.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Anyone? No? I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion.
Yeah, I do, I have a question.
Okay.
So for staff, I was looking at the SCBA, but is my understanding that, I don't know if it was Assembly or County Fire that they either got a grant to purchase or we purchased for them this, so why are we doing it again?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, in a previous council meeting outlined in the staff report, we did bring a similarly-natured item where we recognized the grant acceptance, the EFG grant acceptance. Now that that grant is in place, and, and the purpose was largely to buy equipment, this is among those items to be bought, and because the authorization required here exceeds the city manager's purchasing authority, is why this, along with others, will be brought back to the council for individual purchases drawing against that awarded grant.
You still didn't respond to my question, at least not the way I would have understood what you're saying. You're just restating what I read here. So, it's my understanding that when we had Assembly or County Fire, they had requested a, a purchase because these were so old. Did we not already make it, or did they take it with them and so we had to repurchase them?
I'll defer that to the fire chief, Mr. Benson.
Madam Mayor and council, I'm not familiar with what may have been purchased during the ten-year time period. I can tell you, though, that at transition, there was no mobile air fill station that was listed as a Victorville asset. was listed as a Victorville asset. The importance of this mobile air fill station is that we are, we'll be able to take it to an emergency scene where we need it and utilize it to, to fill the SCBA bottles or the air bottles that are utilized by the firefighter responders from all departments as we conduct mutual aid and automatic aid with each other. It wouldn't matter if it was a Victorville SCBA bottle, or a county SCBA bottle, or somebody from Apple Valley, or Barstow. So this, this provides us with a very valuable asset here that will help in response, as well as protecting firefighters from an increase in cancer risk.
And my question was just if we had, or if we hadn't, and it's not that I understand the needed apparatus for our fire to be safe, so please don't misconstrue my question. It wasn't answered. I guess I have to call the county fire and ask them. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, having heard the response from fire chief, I believe what Councilmember Gomez is speaking to is the actual SCBAs, which there were a number, I don't know the exact transition, or the exact number that came along, I'm hearing 70. But anyhow, there were actual SCBAs, which I believe is what Councilmember Gomez is speaking to. Those came over because they were purchased by the city of Victorville despite the contract with the county of San Bernardino. This item is a little bit different. This is the actual equipment that's used to fill those SCBAs, and so maybe that distinction helps.
Thank you for the clarification.
I need a motion and a second.
I'll move as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 13, Request to Purchase Six Personal Protective Equipment Washers/Extractors with Approved Grant Funds. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the purchase of six personal protective equipment washer extractors in the amount of $54,058.38 from WashX Machinery. This purchase will provide for the proper cleaning and decontamination of firefighters' personal protective equipment, reducing the risk of cancer to firefighters.
Any questions from staff?
Yes. So we had a five-year plan, and we knew how much it would expend. The first year would be very expensive, and ultimately supposedly there would be a savings. However, I want to know if this particular item is already embedded in what was already approved with the five-year plan, and it just requires a secondary approval, or is this something outside of the city manager, which he can't approve with this 50? And we're doing an additional, and you see the money there?
To answer the specific question as to whether or not it was included in the plan, I don't have that answer in front of me. Maybe George does. But irrespective of that, whether it was included in the plan or not, my understanding is that this item is relying on grant funds to offset, and because the amount exceeds the city manager's purchasing authority, is why this item is being brought back.
So, Madam Mayor, council, to answer the question of whether or not the, there was a number of these extractors included in the original plan, there were. We did purchase four of them. The ones that we did purchase based on the original budget, they were slightly undersized. We applied for the grant. We're using the credit that we received from returning those original pieces of equipment for other purposes, and we were fortunate enough with the grant to come through and allow us to actually purchase six of the much larger-sized extractors, which is what is before you tonight. And to echo the city manager's comment, if you notice the amount, it is at $54,000, which is above his signature authority, which is why this is before you. If there are other elements of the grant award that involve lump some purchases with particular vendors and it comes under $50,000, that is within the city manager's authority to approve.
Okay, so I was worried to make sure fiscal accountability and fiscal health for our taxpayer dollars was duly being accomplished. So I'm not battling the question of whether we should or shouldn't purchase this. If we're using a credit and it's even less, and we're going to have more credit to purchase more, it's fine. I need an understanding, because we tell taxpayers a certain thing with five-year plan, and if we don't stay within those merits and we continue to increase, it really calls dishonesty and lack of integrity. So all I'm doing is making sure, okay, so it wasn't in the budget, it wasn't the budget. Clarification is all. Thank you for that.
I have a question. Homeland Security is offering us a grant of $103,000. Whether it's in the five-year plan or not, why would we turn it down?
You're misconstruing my questioning.
Well, I guess I did. I just, whether it's in the plan or not, we apply for grants all the time, and I know that we get a lot of grants that aren't in any kind of a plan. They may not even be in the budget. But the staff is supposed to, according to the City Council, reach out to get grants from the state and federal anytime they can, and we're always thankful when they get them.
You're right. You're so right. Nothing is free in this world, and whether it's grant from the state or the feds, taxpayer dollars, yours and mine. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion and a second.
I move adoption of the staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 14, Request to Purchase Rescue Extrication Tools with Approved Grant Funds. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the purchase of electric and hydraulic power rescue extrication tools in the amount of $114,646 from Homanto Wessex. This purchase will improve the rescue and extrication capabilities and continuity of emergency operations.
Thank you. Again, councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Mr. Cox?
I don't have any questions.
Gomez?
So it's implied in this report that whether it's the money or the planification of these items, they were not a part of, of the five-year plan. Is that accurate to state, or is that off?
It would be accurate to state that the items were a part of the five-year plan. The expectation, this form of cash to pay for that equipment, was not. So said differently, the, the plan is relying largely on general fund money. This actually offsets the dependency in general fund by using outside funding, which is a grant money.
Thank you. No more questions?
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion and a second.
Move staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now, we move on to item 15, Community Services Advisory Committee Appointment. I have made an appointment already. So I need, for Sean Jessup. I need to have the approval of the council, though. My appointment is Sean Jessup?
Yes.
Sean Jessup. That's my motion. I need a second from council.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I second the motion to appoint.
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now, I have Ms. Gomez. Do you have an appointment?
Well, it's my understanding that if people have applied, and I received this within 272 hours, I would expect that they have something to come up here and say. I don't know if they're present, or if they're not. I didn't have time to call any of them up and make sure who they are, so if they're here, I'd like to hear something about them. I know it's three minutes to speak.
So you don't have anyone at this time?
No, unless someone's available, you want to come and see if the approval of my colleagues is here? I guess none of them are present.
I assume that we don't have any.
No. Had someone shown up, we could have made an appointment today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I move we continue the item.
Already made the motion and a second?
We made a motion and a second on your appointment. There's been no action with respect to the vacancy of Councilwoman Gomez, and I think Mr. Cox is suggesting we continue her nomination.
Would it, just point of clarification with the motion and the second as to the one appointment, would it be appropriate to consider taking the vote for the mayor's nomination and then continue the item so as to address Councilmember Gomez's nomination?
That would be appropriate. We actually took the vote, and the vote was affirmative, and so now I think Councilmember Cox's motion is to continue the item so that Councilmember Gomez can make an appointment at, hopefully, I assume, the next meeting, Mr. Cox?
We need to clarify that.
Yeah, so Ms. Gomez's appointment will be continued? Or?
Nomination?
There's a motion to continue the nomination, yes.
Nomination will be continued.
That's a motion. We need a second and a vote.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. To continue, is this to continue the next meeting?
That wasn't the motion. The motion was as followed. I don't understand why everybody has to give a suggestion. Mr. Cox could have said the next date or not the next date. He didn't say it, so why are we clarifying when he didn't say anything? We don't do that when we do before.
We're asking for clarification. Typically, when there's a motion, continue, the council member has the option of leaving it open or specifying a date.
It's being left open. Hence, he didn't give you a date. But you're being suggestive now.
Up to Mr. Cox.
My suggestion was to continue, which means it would appear on the next agenda. We don't make a motion, it would appear on the next agenda. Or if we make the motion, it will not appear on the next agenda.
Now you made your clarification.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Take note, there wasn't no second for that clarification. So we want to talk about being sticklers for policies. It's right here.
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay.
No, not for any further than, you can go back and play the radio, or the, whatever you guys are witnessing the intercom to be. I'm not going to argue that. I mean, they did it, and this is how we foul play. Right? It's a game.
Okay, I will continue, then. At this time, we will have public comments, and I do have a couple of cards. And this is a five-minute time limit.
Three minutes.
Well, based on the policy, the mayor can say five minutes. If you guys are correcting her, you're making her look stupid. I don't appreciate that. She just said five minutes. When you correct her, you make her look like she's not competent. And the policy says that she can do whatever the fuck she wants.
Wow.
Yes. So that upsets me.
Well...
Okay, this administration has been making this woman look not competent, and I'm just tired of this. If she said five minutes, ask her, "Madam, would you like five minutes?" She can clarify, say, "Yes." Oh, you know what? I made a mistake.
Excuse me, I did make a mistake. I looked at the wrong item here. It is a three-minute. Chef Bechal is first, and after him, Ramiro Rodriguez. And it's three minutes. Where is he? Okay, then he misses his turn. Ramiro Rodriguez, he's not here either. Valentin Godina? You're here. Valentin.
Good afternoon, City Council. As you know, everything that goes wrong in the city of Victorville is your fault, and there's plenty of people that will come up here and remind you of that. Now it's my turn to talk, and brace yourself. As a 30-year seasoned resident of Victorville, I want to thank the City Council and all city workers for lighting up Old Town. It was a long time coming, and it finally happened, and on behalf of myself and the residents, I'd like to thank everyone of you for your hard work in doing this. We need to reinvest in our city and in our residents, making a stronger, safer, and healthy community by not forgetting that we need to focus on the future of our children and our seniors by ways of reinvesting in our library, keeping it updated and competitive to the rest of the surrounding libraries, because an educated community is a strong community. Thank you very much.
Did you want to speak?
So I'm new to this and everything, but, and I appreciate your passion. I truly appreciate you fighting for everyone. However, I feel what you're saying gets negated because of the fact that you're constantly in attack mode, and everything that you're saying really is valid, but they're not listening to anything that you're saying because you're attacking. So you're fighting for us, but you're hindering us as well. So I feel like in order for everyone to listen to you, you have to listen to yourself. So that's all I need to say.
I do not have any other cards. Therefore, we move on to reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we've done in previous years, the city of Victorville is proudly serving as host sponsors for the Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders Project in recognition of Black History Month. Desert Valley Hospital is the presenting sponsor for the DVL video, which can be viewed on the large monitor located in the customer service lobby at City Hall for the entire month of February. It's a 30-month, I'm sorry, 30-minute-long video, as a compilation of interviews with local legacies, as well as DVL honorees, local personalities narrating Black History facts, encouraging the viewer to know your history and be proud of the contributions made to our American history by people of color. Also with that, at the Victorville City Library, the Victorville City Library and Ready for Reading Club will celebrate Black History Month with a special children's storytime and craft. That is at the Victorville Library on Thursday, February 27, 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Also, Rolling Start Incorporated will be on-site at the Victorville Library on Wednesday, February 5th, February 5th, to provide information on how to prepare for a secure retirement in your 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s. More information can be found with the Victorville Library. Also, Ready for Reading Club will be on-site again on February 7, 14th, 24th, and 28th to help educate parents regarding effective preschool readiness tools for a smooth, successful education. So that's parent preschool academy sessions at the Victorville Library. That's all I have at this time. Looking forward to see you in the morning at our State of the City.
Thank you. At this time, now we move on to discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. Three-minute time limit. Did you have something to say?
Yes. So a five-year plan for our seniors in the city of Victorville. I know Chula Vista has one, and I've provided one for the record. We don't have one for the city of Victorville. So that would be my motion.
This is to agendize for upcoming?
Yeah, to agendize a... Yeah, to agendize the planification of a five-year strategic plan for our senior populations in the city of Victorville.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
I have a request for a legal opinion, but I don't, that is not a request that falls here. I was going to ask it, but I think my only question would be...
Did you want to say it for the next one? For reports and of council members?
No.
This is just to agendize? Or is that an...
Discussion of possible actions regarding upcoming agenda. I indicated that I was going to ask for this to be on the agenda, but I don't think it's proper. I'm thinking, do I direct it to the manager who gives it to the attorney, to the mayor who gives it to attorney, or the attorney separately?
You could direct it to the city manager who can then coordinate with me.
That would take care of that item, which I mentioned I was going to ask at the end to bring on the agenda, so I will no longer do that.
And Madam Mayor, I hope I'm not being presumptuous, but it appears that there's consensus for that, so it would certainly be appropriate, I think, to give the direction. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, would we do a motion and then a second? Because we can presume all we want, but we don't think alike. Did you make that a motion, Mr. Cox?
No, I was going to ask that it, we have a further agenda item, but then the attorneys from the, sorry. I indicated that I wanted a legal opinion and I was going to request it so that it would be on the agenda at the end of the meeting. However, legal opinions aren't agendized. They're confidential between our city attorney and the city council. So, the question that I ask then is who do I submit it to to get the opinion? City council all get a copy of it, but my understanding it's not a public document. Can make it public, but it's totally written, totally different.
Right.
So, that was the only thing is that I still want the opinion, but not as an agenda item. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm just confused now. So, we can just direct staff without having the entire, I thought it was policy that we all had to agree, at least three of us. But now I think it's, he can direct either you or him and do so?
I believe there was a consensus to do that, or is there not? Do you disagree with getting the opinion?
Well, you take a motion to derive the consensus if there is a consensus.
Or you can indicate a consensus just by approving to go ahead with it.
So, is that also part of the policy? Because I didn't, this is, when Ms. Jones came in, everything started changing. I don't know, we don't have workshops on this. So, you're bringing new ideas that before you, we wouldn't address them like this. It's like you have favoritism or you have experience or what is it?
Madam Mayor, may I respond to that? It's up to you.
Well, we're totally out of order here. I just want to continue with Jim's motion.
Yeah, I, I...
Turn it into a motion?
I realize that it is not good policy for every individual to ask for legal opinions of the city attorney because he would be spending thousands of dollars in his office responding individually. So, I want to make sure that the council agree that that is needed, but I don't want to agendize it.
I've heard agreement only from two council members right now that that is needed.
Sorry?
I've only heard agreement from two council members that that is needed right now.
Yeah, there needs to be a third councilman agree or otherwise he doesn't have to listen. He doesn't have to respond to my request for a legal opinion.
Or you could make it a motion just to ask the city manager to get an opinion on this item.
Oh, in that case, I could do that. I'll just, I'll make a motion to the city manager.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
So, that takes agendizing. Did you have?
I don't, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not, thank you.
So, now we move on to reports from council members and this is a three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez, did you want to start?
Yes. Entonces estoy hablando a mi comunidad, las personas que entienden el habla hispana y las personas que quieren traducir. A veces aquí es un poco difícil porque vienes, tienen personas que vienen y te atacan. Pero hay una posición que está aquí. La posición que tengo hoy es para hablar y ser tu voz. Si no entendistes, a lo mejor necesitas que alguien te traduzca. Necesitas dinero y posiblemente nosotros podamos aprobarlo. Pero buena suerte, esto es para hacer un punto. Lo que estamos haciendo hoy aquí es para que tú, si eres un negociante, tengas tu voz. Y si te sientes mal porque no hay traducción, yo estoy disponible. Me paro de donde yo estoy, entrego mi asiento por tres minutos, seis minutos, y te ayudo. Mañana vamos a tener en el comercio de negociantes Victor Valley, una presentación a las siete y media. Desafortunadamente, si no eres parte del sistema y no pagas, no vas a poder escucharlo. Pero sí, lo que te digo es, por favor, sé parte y dinos a nosotros que tú quieres que esa presentación sea publicada, no solamente en las redes sociales de Victorville. Pero quizás cuando venga ese festival grande que viene más o menos en octubre, podamos hacer algo más grande para que tú seas parte. Quizás podamos ponerlo en español, porque no lo han hecho en español. Pero ojalá sigas viniendo, escuches por medio de Facebook, por medio de Twitter, como tú puedas. Y si eres una persona que no tiene transporte o que tienes, que no puedes asistir por cualquier razón, ven, danos tu opinión. Podemos tener citas los sábados, podemos tener citas un lunes al mes, podemos hacer tantas cosas, solamente son tres votos. Es todo lo que se necesita. Entonces hoy dedico, y no voy a traducir porque me molesta cuando a mí no me traducen. Pero afortunadamente yo sé tres idiomas y no necesito traducción las tres. Aquellas personas que no están entendiendo lo que estoy diciendo, así es como se siente la persona que habla quizás árabe, coreano, que no tiene la lengua para dominar. Tú te sientes así, ojalá y tú te hayas sentido como yo me he sentido muchas veces cuando a veces no entiendo lo que estás diciendo, en inglés, porque hablas mucho técnico. De todas maneras, ojalá y mañana lo habramos para ti, para que tú seas parte de lo que está sucediendo en la ciudad de Victorville y podamos tener más personas acá arriba que te representen a ti y representen tu voz y empiezan a hablar el idioma que tú entiendes que es, en mi situación, el español. Pero si tienes árabe y solamente tienes árabe, entonces que lo empezemos a hablar. Muchas gracias, cuídense, y hasta la próxima, que es dos semanas de aquí tenemos otra cita. Espero verlos, no solamente aquí en presencia, sino también en las redes sociales. Gracias.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this being Black History Month, I just wish to acknowledge that I'm so very proud of all of the work over the past many years that has been done to recognize our dreamers, visionaries, and leaders. And for any of those that are so interested, I would think that the thirty, getting a hold of that thirty-minute video would be a good watch and very helpful. Happy Valentine's Day for all of those who have sweethearts. That's coming up on the fourteenth and I'm certainly looking to my day with my sweetheart of almost forty years. And with regard to how things go across the dais in terms of procedure and protocols and so forth, consensus building sometimes is one of those nuanced things that the chair of the meeting has to navigate and it's not always easy. But consensus building happens in a variety of ways and in this case, it certainly in my mind, happened on a prior agenda item when there was the very same discussion. It appeared at that time that we had three council members that would favor such direction and that's why I spoke up. As to why things might be done a little differently when I'm on board, well, I would presume that that has a lot to do with why people generally run for city council. They have a specific skill set or passion or talent that they wish to bring to the dais and certainly consensus building, nuanced as it may be at times, it certainly aligns well with accepted practice and parliamentary rule, which I am indeed familiar with and that is one of the skills that I had envisioned bringing to the dais and I have indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, if I may say, we rely on our attorney actually to give us direction, but we appreciate your efforts. The other thing that I have, I hope I'm not out of order, but I wanted to let Ms. Gomez know, maybe she was not informed, that we will be actually videotaping, of course, the state of the city in the morning and it will be viewed on our website and also we will have it here also. Maybe, city manager, maybe you can explain a little better than I can because I don't have all the information, but it will be actually presented to employees and then you invite the public also, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We particularly proud of being able to introduce it to the employees and we usually do it over the course of two days, four sessions. It's an opportunity for them also to see what we've all been a part of for the last year.
Is the public invited at that time?
No, no, that one's strictly employees.
Okay. I understood that we would also have a time where a public that were not able to attend the state of the city would be able to come in and view it.
We don't have anything currently scheduled, but as a part of our outreach efforts...
I think that would be...
I think it's a good idea.
Agendize that?
I don't know, I mean, you're welcome to, but just hearing the comment, I think it's a great idea. We're actually working, and actually we're starting to think about our community pop-up events coming up in the summertime, so certainly we can consider incorporating into that or doing something special.
Okay. Because that's something that Ms. Gomez brought up in Spanish, you know, that she would like to have that and I assume that you did not know that it could be possible to have it.
Right, so if you're willing to make that a motion, I'm willing to second it.
Right now, we're just at community comments, but you could make a, you could actually make a motion on it if you wanted to at this point.
I don't think it's needed because I think...
I think Keith's gonna, yeah.
But he agreed that...
I believe Keith's gonna work on...
So, let's look into it. Okay. I believe that's all that we have for this evening. This meeting is adjourned.